Twenty-one, I am calling to order the Cedar Woolley City Council, and this is actually our last meeting of the year. So we have a lot that we need to go over, so we're going to get right to it. If you will all stand with me to say the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So I'm going to go through and do roll call. Councilman DeYoung.
Present.
Thank you. Councilwoman Kestie.
Present.
Thank you. Councilwoman Diamond.
Present.
Thank you. Councilman Owen. No, Councilman Owen, okay. Councilman Lavaca. Thank you. Councilman McGoffin.
Present.
Thank you. And Councilman Allen.
Present.
Thank you. All right, we're looking for an approval of the agenda. Do I have a motion?
Madam Mayor, move to approve the agenda.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. So we had a motion by Councilwoman Kestie, seconded by Councilman McGoffin. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Looking for consent agenda. Do I have a motion? Oh my goodness, people. Okay, so I have a motion by Councilman Allen, seconded by Councilman McGoffin. Any discussion? This is for items one through 10 on the agenda, consent agenda. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 And those opposed, same sign. Okay, so we are going to move into a swearing in. The state of Washington has an interesting setup. So Joe, who was, I should say Joe Burns, who was elected into Ward Six is to be sworn in before the end of the year. So we're going to swear him in tonight, and he will take his seat then January 5th when we begin our 2022 session. So Joe, if you want to come forward.
See if you raise your right hand. I, Joe Burns.
I, Joe Burns.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
And the laws of the United States.
And the laws of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws.
And the Constitution and laws.
Of the state of Washington.
Of the state of Washington.
And all local ordinances.
And all local ordinances.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
And I will faithfully and impartially.
Perform and discharge the duties.
Perform and discharge the duties.
Of the office of council member.
Of the office of council member.
Ward Six for the city of Cedar Woolley.
Ward Six for the city of Cedar Woolley.
Skagit County.
Skagit County.
According to law.
According to law.
And the best of my ability and understanding.
And the best of my ability and understanding.
Congratulations, Joe.
Thank you.
Welcome on board.
Thank you.
And I need you to sign before you go.
Yes.
And so tonight is Councilman DeYoung's last meeting. And come January 5th then, Joe will be taking the seat for Ward Six. Thank you, Joe.
Yep, thank you again.
Thank you, yeah. Thank you for coming, Diana Nioli.
Madam Mayor. Yes, Councilwoman Kestie.
I, Chuck just tried to call me. He somehow got booted off, and he's looking for Bill to help him get back on.
All right, thank you. So we'll let Chuck and Bill do that. Thank you for making us aware of that, Councilwoman Kestie. We were supposed to have the Cedar Woolley Rotary tonight, but I do not see them here for a presentation. And because we have so much on our agenda, we're just going to continue to move forward. So I'm going to move into staff meeting, or staff reports. Meeting would take quite a while now, wouldn't it? So we're going to move into staff reports, and I will begin with Chief Wagner.
Good evening, Councilman Mayor. I just want to thank you all for the consent agenda. We'll get those ambulances in the queue and hopefully get receipt of those. Other than that, if you were on Highway Nine this afternoon, you would have saw a lot of our resources and folks down there helping with one of their structured fires near their fire station. And that is all I have for this week.
All right, thank you. Chief Tucker.
Thank you, Mayor. And good luck, Carl, on your further endeavors in the future here. Just a couple of things from me. We had a wonderful award ceremony. Officer Katie Wilson was given an award by the Sons of the American Revolution for an outstanding job she did on diffusing a armed subject at the Skagit Valley Hospital when she was there for a completely different subject that she brought in. And she had a trainee with her, who's now an officer on the road, Rachel Humbert. And Rachel got to sit on the award ceremony, too. It was very nice, and we got to see a lot of people recognized. And the only other thing that I've got tonight is we should be seeing Isaiah Van Dam completing the Police Academy on Friday. And we'll be looking forward to getting him back from chilly Spokane and getting him on the road here. And that's all I got, ma'am.
All right, thank you. Director of Public Works, Mark Freiberger.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Council. Just a few things. The crew down at the wastewater facility has poured the foundations and the stem walls for the new wastewater laboratory building. And they were excavating today for the footings for the second building. So that's moving along quickly. Hope to have that out of the ground and coming up into the air within the month. State Street Pump Station, now we're getting our materials together under the emergency declaration to move forward with the permanent repairs to that station. Hopefully, in the second week of January is when those materials will all be available, and we'll get that fixed permanently. The fire station 2.75 building is pretty much complete, other than the doors. They've been delayed till about mid-January as well. The township intersection project on Highway 20, the contract has been awarded, and we're beginning the submittal process on that. And Mayor did receive confirmation from the Transportation Improvement Board for the two project awards under TIBS funds this year. And so we should be seeing contracts for your approval in January for that work. And the rest of this I have tonight will be presentations later on. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Coleman. Not Councilman, Director Coleman.
Thank you for the upgrade, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor, Council. I understand we've got a lot on the council agenda tonight, so I don't have anything pressing to present tonight, so I'll leave it at that.
All right, thank you. And Director Burton.
I don't know what's wrong with me tonight. No, that's right. Thank you, Mayor, and good evening, Council. I, too, have quite a few items on the agenda this evening, so I will pass any other comments, but just to wish everyone happy holidays.
All right, thank you. Director Chambers.
Well, mostly just working on cleaning up after the scare of the phishing emails from Burlington compromised exchange accounts. We didn't have any issues, so that's all good. Woody's moving the core file server data onto the new radar rate this evening. And we are in the process of getting our data migrated to the new SIM cemetery management system. And that's about it.
Thank you. Our city attorney, Nikki Thompson.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. In the interest of brevity this evening, I don't have anything to add other than to say I hope you all have a very merry Christmas and happy holiday season.
All right, thank you. And our city administrator, Charlie Bush.
Thank you, Mayor Johnson. I just have a couple of items. My computer's going nuts at the moment, my apologies, but I have a couple of items that were on consent. Thank you, Council, for the action on those. And also a couple of items at the end of the agenda. So I'll just keep it at that for now. Of course, there's plenty going on, but there'll be time to talk next year.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, everybody, for your brevity. And we're going to move on to the council members, and I will begin with Councilman DeYoung. And Councilman DeYoung, I just want to say thank you for the four years that you have served on the council, and we appreciate the time that you've given us, and we wish you well. Do you have a?
There's the young gift. Thank you. I just wanted to say thank you to the Ward Six report here. We had a little bit of snow, a little bit of cold, and it looked like trees stood up during the coldness, and the city departments weren't overtaxed on that. And if I could just indulge, for personal privilege, about 100 words, I'd appreciate it. So I am proud of my public service and the impact I've been part of here in Cedar Woolley. Thank you, Chief. To my fellow council members, mayor, board and commission volunteers, and fellow citizens of our fine hyphenated city. On this last meeting of my current term, I wish to express my thank you all for your wealth of wisdom that you've shared with me over the past four years. When Mayor Wagner urged me to run, I became keenly aware that there's much to learn, and each of you have been part of this great learning process and are responsible for the fruits that is born. Just four things I want to leave you with to mark the memories I hold, and perhaps those continuing this journey into the future will consider. Standing up to take care of the most vulnerable among us, especially those on fixed incomes. Standing up to strengthen our public safety and investing in those solutions, such as a lovely lid lift measure to provide critical equipment, necessary training, and expanding the staffing of our police department. Standing up to ease congestion now and in the future. And that involved personally lobbying down at the state Capitol. And standing up for the tough conversations about the issues that matter. And not backing down from those things that are your values. I am proud of our city staff, and I believe in our city staff. The city is in good hands with these capable professionals. And I'm honored to have worked alongside with them for the past four years. I've learned that the position of city council member is a daily commitment to citizenship, camaraderie, and compromise. It takes all three to make effective change in our town, and that truly is the Cedar Woolley way. The issues we took on as a team were critical and exciting, and the advancements we made makes me proud to have been part of that team. Progress never stops. In the future, Cedar Woolley holds many challenges that remain important to me. I may not be on the council, but I will always be active in the future of Cedar Woolley as a neighbor and a constituent. And it has been an honor to serve. Thank you.
All right, thank you. And again, we wish you the very best. Councilwoman Kestie, do you have a report tonight?
Just a really short one. I just wanted to send a thank you out to the city staff, the chamber, and all the volunteers for making our tree lighting and parade such a great event.
All right, thank you. And I want to note for the record that Councilman Owen is now on. And so, Councilman Owen, I will move to you. Do you have a report for us tonight?
Thank you, Mayor. I don't have anything major. I just stated I couldn't go to the Christmas parade. I heard it was just fantastic, but I didn't think I need to be mixing in a crowd. So, and thank you, Carl, for your service here on the council, and I wish you well in whatever you have in the future. And I guess that's all I have, Mayor.
All right, thank you. Councilwoman Diamond.
Good evening. Just a couple of things. First, I want to thank the police department and their staff for all the things they've been doing around here to keep our city safe. If anybody follows their Facebook page, they're very transparent about some of the ongoings and things going on, and I thank them for that. And I think there's a lot of people in the city that do also. There's been a lot of very interesting calls, to say the least, and things that are newer to happening, some of this stuff happening in the town, or maybe more people are kind of becoming aware of it. Anyways, there's some situations that could have gone horribly wrong, but due to our wonderful police staff and their training and everybody around them, they were able to have good outcomes. And so I want to thank you guys for that and everything you're doing for our city and keeping everyone safe. As a reminder to constituents and everybody else out there, please just make sure if you see something, say something. I think that that's definitely key, and to be aware. It's getting darker earlier. People are out shopping. Don't leave things laying out in your vehicles. Don't create reasons for people to commit crimes, but definitely just be aware and enjoy the holidays. And it was incredibly nice to see people out and about since the tree has been lit. People are out and about spreading holiday cheer in town, and I have heard absolutely nothing but great response regarding the Christmas parade. So thank you to everybody that helped to put that on. I've actually been approached by several people as to who to talk to in regards to sponsoring it and becoming a sponsor for businesses and stuff next year. So that stuff, that is fantastic. It just goes to show you how much something like that can mean to so many people. And not only was it available for people to see in person, but the pictures and the people talking about it on social media and the trends that follow through that do nothing but help to create a great positive buzz about our great little city here. So, thank you. And thank you, Carl, for your service. It's been a short time for you and I to work together here, but I just want to say thank you and welcome, Joe. We look forward to seeing you in the new year.
All right, thank you. Councilman Lavaca.
Thank you so much. I only have a few things to mention as well. I didn't know you, Carl, too well. I have seen you in the videos, Councilman DeYoung, and I do appreciate the service that you've done, and I'm sure you will be active in the community, and that's really awesome. I wanted to thank Charlie and John and Debbie for all of their support. I have had one meeting, and I've had one workshop, and I've gotten a lot of encouragement and support when I've reached out to them, getting adjusted into it. So I really thank you guys. I thank you, John, for meeting with me, kind of giving me the overview of the comprehensive plan and answering some questions, and just your passion about hearing what the other constituents were thinking or saying when I was door knocking and hearing some feedback there. And that's really cool and encouraging. And so I really appreciate that. I appreciate the team. I think this is awesome. Couple of things that came up when I was walking around talking with some people was, and I don't even know if this is the right form for it, but one of the constituents, one of the people in our neighborhood mentioned that it would be really cool to move the flower ordinance from not doing artificial flowers till the November, back into the beginning of October, so that they can put artificial flowers on their family members' graves when they end up going there to visit them. It's hard to find the real flowers, and they don't last throughout the month of October. So I said I wouldn't mention that. And then one other person had mentioned something about, and I thought it was a great idea to bring up, and that was having either parts or all of the carnival, probably part of the carnival in downtown or over by the old Ford Shop or somewhere around how they used to have it. If we do it again for the next year and maybe start working towards planning on that, so there's maybe some games and some rides available downtown that people see when they drive by, and they can be directed down to the Riverfront Park or whatnot. So, but I've gotten a lot of great response from the community, and people are really excited this year. I think that that's really awesome. So I'm very encouraged by everything happening. Thank you guys so much.
All right, thank you. Councilman McGoffin.
Hi, good evening. I just wanted to thank Councilman DeYoung for all of his contributions and effort on the council. And I also look forward to working with Joe in the future. Thank you.
All right, thank you. And Councilman Allen.
I would first of all like to thank Carl for his service. We'll be seeing each other before too long. And then if it's still legal, I would like to wish everyone in the community a Merry Christmas.
Thank you. So I am just going to, because I was on a call with the Health Department today, I just want to remind everybody that we really are on the downside of the Delta virus right now as in Skagit County, and it would be nice to stay on that side. So please keep yourself healthy by wearing the masks and social distancing, and perhaps even limiting the amount of people you get together with. I know that's challenging over the holidays. I know it's challenging for me, but if we all work together with this, we'll be able to hopefully put this pandemic behind us, and we can move forward with our lives. And just as Councilman Allen had stated, I, too, want to wish everybody a wonderful blessed Christmas, and I hope it's a chance for everybody to experience some rest and some joy through this holiday season. Okay, moving on, we are going into public comment. The time is 6:21. I will open public comment. Is there anybody online or in the council who may wish to make public comment? I'm scanning through the screen here. I do not see anybody with their hand raised, and nobody in the council chambers has said anything. So it is still 6:21, and I'm going to close public comment. And we're going to move right into a public hearing. And this is for ordinance number 2001-21, the PSE franchise agreement renewal. And I believe, Nikki, are you going to be leading us through this?
Yes, I am, Mayor, thank you. Before I start on the PSE ordinance, Mayor, could I ask you to ask the council for a motion to amend the agenda to move the Bucko Development Agreement up into public hearings? That actually is supposed to be under public hearings, and it was advertised as such. It just didn't get in the correct order.
Oh, absolutely, I could do that. So at the request of our city attorney, Nikki Thompson, is there a motion to move the Bucko Trust Development Agreement up into public hearing?
So moved, Madam Mayor.
Okay, I have a motion by Councilman Allen. Do I have a second?
Second. Owen, second.
Okay. So a motion by Councilman Allen, seconded by Councilman Owen. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 And those opposed, same sign. All right, so it has been moved up into public hearing. Did you want to do that before we did the PSE? Or do you want to just go in the order that we've got it going here?
In the order we have it is fine, Mayor, and thank you for indulging my idiosyncrasies.
No worries. Go ahead.
The first public hearing that we have this evening is the PSE ordinance granting a 15-year franchise, and that's ordinance number 2001-21. Council has had the opportunity to review this agreement at its last meeting. As we discussed before, this is a non-exclusive franchise that allows PSE to operate its facilities within the public rights of way. It outlines the requirements that PSE has to follow, including insurance and indemnification, bonding, how the repair is to be done, requires compliance with our other types of permits. And it just generally lays out what that relationship looks like. Council has had an opportunity to review it before. It is on page 90 of your packet. And this evening, what we are looking for is to open and hold a public hearing, and then a motion from council to adopt ordinance 2001-21 granting PSE a non-exclusive franchise.
Okay, so are there any questions by the staff or even council? Council questions, too, Nikki.
Excuse me, Nikki, Councilman Allen. Are there any trick things in here, or is it just very straightforward?
Well, Councilman Allen, I consider it fairly straightforward. It is an agreement that is very similar to the agreements that many jurisdictions have. They tend to be fairly boilerplate with usually some tweaks by the local jurisdictions, but they're pretty uniform across the board.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions for Ms. Thompson? Okay, hearing done, I'm going to open this up to the public. Does the public wish to give testimony regarding ordinance 2001-21, the PSE franchise agreement? There is no one in the chamber making that request, and I do not see anybody online. So at this point, I am going to close the public testimony. And council, this is your opportunity to do any deliberation, if you would like to do that. Are there any comments or questions or concerns by the council? Okay, hearing done, I am going to close the public hearing, and I am looking for a motion. The recommendation, of course, is to adopt ordinance 2001-21, authorizing and granting Puget Sound Energy, PSE, a non-exclusive franchise to construct, maintain, operate, repair, and replace its facility within the public rights and the public right of way. Is there a motion?
Madam Mayor.
I'll make a motion. Okay, good. We have a motion by Councilman Owen, seconded by Councilman Diamond. Are there any comments, questions? All those in favor. Because this is a public hearing, I am going to go down the line just to make sure that we have everybody accounted for. So if you are in favor of the motion, that would be a yes. If you are not in favor of the motion, that would be a no. And I will begin with you, Councilman DeYoung.
Yes.
Thank you. Councilwoman Kestie.
Yes.
Thank you. Councilwoman Diamond.
Yes.
Thank you. Councilman Owen.
Yes.
Thank you. Councilman Lavaca.
Yes.
Thank you. Councilman McGoffin.
Yes.
Thank you. And Councilman Allen.
Yes.
Thank you. So we have a, it's unanimous, seven votes for the recommendation to adopt ordinance 2001-21. Okay, thank you. Any comments, Ms. Thompson, or are you ready to move on to the next public hearing?
Need to move on.
All right.
So the next item that I have for you this evening, which is also a public hearing, is the development agreement with Bucko Survivors Trust. The Bucko family has been working towards completing plans for a development that is on their property that sits between Cook Road and FNS Grade Road. The city, as you're all aware, originally had plans to put an arterial through, a north-south arterial through to the west of their property. arterial through, to the west of their property. Prior to a full submittal development application for the Bucko plat, it was determined that it would be cost prohibitive to put the arterial through where the city originally wanted to put it. To that end, the city asked the developer to go ahead and redo its plans to show the arterial going through the project. We have worked for a number of months with the developer to come to an agreement that allows for the collaboration on design and construction of the arterial road that is eventually going to connect Cook Road and FNS Grade Road. I am happy to report that I think it was a really good negotiation, and that everyone tried very hard to ensure that both the city's needs were met and the developers' needs were met. This particular agreement lays out who is responsible for what, essentially. The developer is going to be constructing a portion of that arterial that it wouldn't otherwise be responsible for, and the city is going to be providing compensation for that development, that additional development. It's also going to be providing compensation for its percentage of the design and engineering that is associated with that extra piece of arterial, and it will also be getting some additional property that will be utilized for the arterial. This evening, we had a minor change that was sent to you prior to the meeting, and that change is, it's fairly simple. It's a change to the exhibit that shows the phasing of the construction of the arterial, and it was also a small change to Section 7 of the agreement, which clarified exactly when the piece of the arterial that is south of the Hammerhead, the northern Hammerhead and north of Brickyard Creek, when that piece will be constructed. But beyond that, what you see in your packet is exactly what we're asking you to approve this evening. The recommended action is to authorize the mayor to sign the development agreement with Bucko Survivors Trust. This does require a public hearing, and so I will turn it over to the mayor to address that now.
All right. Thank you. So council, this is your opportunity to ask questions of Nikki Thompson regarding this recommended action, the Bucko Survivor Trust Development Agreement. Are there any questions or comments you wish to address to Ms. Thompson?
I have a couple.
Thank you.
Councilmember Diamond, my first question in this is that I want to confirm that the development that's currently being discussed in here and tied to this specifically right now is 68 units, and that that is a current zoning and not a rezoning. Is that correct?
This development agreement is under current zoning.
Okay. And this agreement, if this is approved tonight, has absolutely nothing, no ties and not contingent on a rezoning in the future for the other parcels?
This agreement is absolutely not connected to any rezone requests associated with other parcels.
Okay. And then for, can somebody just explain to me a little bit about how the traffic is going to work as it comes through here? Is it going to be a two-lane development going through to, I guess I'm, how is this going to be alleviating the traffic as they're driving through residential area?
So I think that it's probably best if I turn to Mark for technical questions. I can tell you that I know, I know how this operates. At Cook Road, there's going to be a roundabout that will take traffic through that area and up into the arterial, which will cross at the outskirts of the residential development and up towards FNS Grade. But Mark will have to answer the technical questions that relates to the traffic impact analysis.
My concern is that if we're driving, this is driving through, it's allowing for the connection and it's driving through, but we're going straight through a residential that's being created. Are we creating another Klinger Estates where we've got people parking on the side of the road, people, you've got to drive through the middle, kids darting in and out, it becomes an unsafe environment, and you've got too many people coming and going? Because 68 homes, two cars per home on average, probably at minimum, to be honest, you know, that's a lot of additional traffic coming in there, and I realize that the roads become necessary for future development and what we've got going on right now. But my question is, are we creating another Klinger Estates problem where that is an issue? I just don't want to see that.
In a one-word answer, no, it will not create another Klinger Estates. In fact, that was part of the lengthy negotiations that Nikki alluded to earlier. This will be a part of the Jones-Johnliner corridor that we've been talking about at council for years now, and it skirts the outside of the Bucko development purposely, and it does avoid the very things that you're mentioning. It is directly to the east of the backside of the Klinger Estates, and it would be to the west of the new development.
Okay.
So I think in part, it'll theoretically alleviate some of the traffic through Klinger. Is that accurate, Mark?
Well, this particular one is isolated from Klinger by purpose, but in terms of the overall traffic flow in the city, the Jones-Johnliner corridor is indeed meant to alleviate traffic issues we've got on Cook Road and on Highway 20 and Highway 9. So we'll take portion of the traffic that currently is all congregated on Highway 20 and allow it, the residential, and not the residential, but the single-family vehicle traffic mostly, to use this alternative route.
Does that answer your question? Sarah?
For now, yes.
Okay, good. Are there any other questions?
Yeah, Mark, just a quick question here, Councilman Allen. You know, with the new apartment complex off of Hodgins Road and all this going on, what the heck is going to happen to traffic on Highway 20 and Cook Road going out to I-5? Is it going to back into town? Or, I mean, are you doing studies on this? Obviously you have, but how much is this going to impact people trying to get to work and trying to get out of their homes and stuff?
Well, a couple of things, I'll comment on that. Yes, indeed, we are doing planning. In fact, I just received an update to our city transportation model that we did to look at all of the recent growth and what we're projecting to happen over the next few years. We did this back in 2016, and that supported the design and construction of the John Linder Corridor project that I just mentioned. That's part of the reason, that's part of the driver behind that, is the anticipated growth in the city. And also, understand that there is two types of traffic that are involved in our growing transportation needs in the city. There's the internally generated traffic from our own existing and planned development that we have here, plus there's the through traffic, which is also increasing quite a bit. And so I just, the study that I just received, I'll be looking at very carefully to see if that's the somewhat accelerated pace of traffic growth will have any effect on that. I don't think it will, because we had allowed for the growth to take place. It may be taking place somewhat quicker than it was, but it was going to happen anyway. And the corridor that, the John Linder corridor is meant to help to alleviate that. Basically, building the corridor allows us to spread that traffic out. If we don't do that, it'll all remain concentrated on Highway 20, Highway 20-plus Cook Road going to the west, and so this is meant to aid in that process. We are, you mentioned Hodgins, we are also looking at that growth down in that part with the apartments from the same aspect, and looking particularly at the intersection at Cook and Trail, and seeing if the improvements that we're already planning on need to be accelerated at that location.
All right. I would actually piggyback on that, just because I don't work in this, you know, my day-to-day job in the city of Cedar Wully, and I do purposefully take different routes every, every couple days, so that I can see different traffic options at different times of day. I leave my house and go to work between 6:00 and 6:15, five to six days a week, and I can tell you, on Cook Road this morning at 6:05, there was actually quite a bit of traffic. And so, you know, I just, I kind of see that same concern in how all of that is going to funnel, because you can't really widen some of those roads. You've got farmland legacy on both sides, and businesses and other things, and so I, you know, I do, for future purposes, think that that's definitely a discussion, and I know that there is discussion of all of it, but it's definitely something that this is also going to impact as well. You know, that's just, the 68 residential units is just one portion, one phase of this development, and correct me if I'm wrong, because it's my understanding that there's a possibility of rezoning and other issues coming up. So this is just the first portion of that. Is that correct?
That is correct. I mean, it's the first.
It's the first phase of more developments to come.
It's the only phase that is currently under application, right? But, you know, there's, as you're all aware, there is request to rezone adjacent property as well. But the only thing in front of us right now, and under application, is this particular plat.
Okay.
I would say that our traffic model update that I mentioned takes all of that into account. There's nothing there that's not already planned for. And I'll also say that I've really appreciated the fact that the Bucko family has been willing to work with us on developing this development agreement, because this greatly enhances and moves forward the whole concept of the corridor planning. Without this, this would be, basically, we would be done. So it's very important that we move forward with this in a manner that allows us to partner with them and build this portion of the project.
And I will also point out that their attorney and engineers and Ms. Bucko, they're all online this evening as well, if there are questions. When I was speaking with their attorney, he indicated that he didn't need to be heard unless there were questions.
All right. Any other council members? Questions?
Madam Mayor, I have a question.
Yes, Councilman McGoffin.
In the agreement under 9A, could you just explain a little bit about what that's talking about, especially like the UV MU overlay? Thank you.
So I'm scrolling down to 9A. So 9A, this is the piece that the applicant requested a rezone on as part of the city's annual comp plan update. This is not actually related to that requested rezone. This was, this was an offer by the city to support a potential UV MU overlay request, but it is simply an agreement on the part of staff to support that. It is, of course, a legislative decision by the council.
Can I ask why that was put in there? If they're separate?
It was, it was simply an incentive. It was an offer to support that, knowing that there was going to be a request to move to higher density, and that staff wasn't necessarily in favor of moving to that higher density. This was seen as a compromise, and so it was offered in compromise.
But I believe that somebody just, that I was advised that there was no contingencies here, but in 9A, it says right here that this was up for discussion for that.
Well, the agreement says that staff will not oppose it. So typically, when we are looking at doing rezones, staff takes a position either in supportive or in opposition to, based on what the comp plan shows as appropriate. And in this case, we, the agreement is that staff will not oppose that particular application. It is still council's choice, 100%, and it's not even something that is before the council. It's a future potential application.
Any other questions or concerns? Any comments?
I just have a comment, Councilmember Kestie. I would have felt a lot better had that not even been put in at all, because I see that as an incentive that I would, I would like it to have been taken off.
Madam Mayor, to stay in the same vein as Council Lady Kestie, I think it's an intention to move this along, and I think it's something we have to be very wary about. When staff comes out and says, well, we won't oppose it, that means they won't oppose it. So, you know, I would like something in footnotes or something to let future councils or our council know what these are intentions, they're not.
Okay.
I would agree, especially since, you know, in direct questioning, I was advised that there was no contingencies. Councilmember McGoffin brought to note 9A specifically, and it does kind of allude to the fact that there are connections there that would state that a rezoning or additional measures would be agreed on, completely separate from this specific discussion and public hearing that we're to be having.
And so I apologize for any miscommunication on my part. I was understanding the question to be related to the rezone request that was a part of the comp plan docket this particular year. That's what I understood the question to be about.
Yeah, developer wishes to petition the city for a change in applicable zoning. The parties acknowledge that the ultimate decision, the reason, lies with council. However, staff does not oppose the concept of applying. I mean, that to me just sounds like there's stuff being worked out and negotiated. I understand that some of that stuff happens, but I don't think that this is the agreement that we should be, we should be moving forward with and having that language in there.
So Nikki-
I think that that would be a completely separate issue.
So Nikki, is it my understanding that this is really, this is really protocol? I mean, even if that wasn't in there, that still would be a situation that could arise, where if the Buckos wanted to move forward with possible rezoning, our staff is responsible for being open to that, right? Because it is the council's choice as to whether or not that rezone can happen or not.
Right. So Councilmember Diamond, are you aware that there is a current request in front of the city to rezone that property to a higher density?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, so-
So I just believe that they should be separate issues, and that that shouldn't be included in here, because this is, this is about the road project in the initial phase of the 68 units, and not a possible rezone.
Understood. And I think Mr. Schutz, the attorney for the Buckos, wanted to say something?
Thank you. Just briefly, I just wanted to give a little context for this provision from the owner's This wasn't something that we asked for, this was something that staff brought up, and we all thought that it made sense to put in as a, as essentially a statement that, I mean, frankly, the staff was explaining that they were not supporting the higher density, and that they would, however, potentially support this lower, lower-density commercial use with the overlay. And so it's not tied to this agreement, it's not, it's not a essential component, it's not any sort of promise that it would go forward, there's no plan currently on the table. So to the extent that's helpful, I just wanted to state that. The language that was put in, as you can kind of tell, was staff hedging very, very carefully to say, you can put in an application for that, and that's just fine, but at the end of the day, council will decide on it, and that's that. So I'll leave it at that, but if anyone has any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Much more eloquently stated than my statement.
All right, thank you. Any other comments or questions?
Madam Mayor?
Yes, Councilman Lavaca.
So is there a long-term plan that's in phases of Phase 1, 2, and 3 that we're seeing? I understand that this is just part of the traffic situation, but is there a long-term objective from the comprehensive plan or future concepts that may be proposed?
Sure, I understand the question fully.
It's if, if there's going to be a rezoning for maybe an R-5 or something, or is it going to be additional- to be additional areas too? Will grow, is this like a first phase, let's get traffic over there, and then after that, the next phase is, hey, let's do some rezoning and get some homes over there and some commercial buildings? Is there a long plan that is, that you guys are aware of or that is being constructed that will be brought in phase by phase?
So what the city is aware of currently is the plat application for the homes, the residential development that is going to be occurring on the Bucko property. The other property that Councilmember Diamond referenced is actually to the south of that property, but also owned by the Bucko family. And right now, they've had some conceptual ideas, but there aren't any plans at this point that have been submitted to the city for any development. Right now, it is zoned commercial.
Thank you.
Anyone else? I want to give everybody the opportunity to ask questions of our attorney. Okay, if there are no more questions, then I am going to open this up for public testimony. Is there anybody online who would like to give any testimony to the Bucko Survivors Trust Development Agreement? I'm scanning through the pages here, and I do not see anybody else online. Bill, do you see anybody who may be wanting to speak?
No, nothing to show.
Excellent, all right, thank you. So now it comes back to you, council. Here's your opportunity for deliberation, a chance to really talk this through, and I will open that up to you. Okay, if there is nothing more.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Hi, Councilmember DeYoung. I have a question directed at Mr. Freiberger. What's Plan B if this doesn't go through?
Plan B, if this doesn't go through, would be to return to the original plan to try to go through the school district property. I've talked about that in the past. That's an incredibly expensive alternative to this, and in my professional opinion, that would make the corridor extremely difficult to complete.
Right. So what kind of scale are we looking at in adding costs?
It was in the $200,000 range.
I stepped on you, Mark, I'm sorry. I didn't hear it.
It was in the $26 million range.
Thank you.
For that.
So if I hear this correctly, we have a traffic situation that's growing, obviously, in Cedar Woolley, and the way to get that alleviated at this point is to put in that artillery, and the Buckos are working with us, the city, and we're working with the Buckos in order to accomplish that.
That is correct.
I know that that's, yeah, because this wouldn't be related to the John Liner, even though it all connects, but would we possibly see traffic coming out of 9, that is heavy truck traffic, possibly from Canada, alleviated by that or increased by that? I know that will go through residential, so that's probably two different situations that we're talking about.
It would increase the overall volume of traffic passing through the city. This particular route is not designed to take heavy truck traffic. It will be, in fact, load limited to prevent that kind of traffic to come through this vicinity.
I would just like to make note that although Ferry Street is not designed for that kind of traffic, it does receive that kind of traffic now, and that's because of the roundabouts. Some of the drivers coming down from either, you know, up Highway 20 delivering, I don't know what, or coming down from Highway 9, and some of them, it's just simply trying to avoid the scale coming through I-5, so they take the alternative route and come down. So if they can avoid roundabouts in any way, shape, or form, they will know, they will pass that around, and that's what they do. I've talked to quite a few truck drivers about that, and they all are very open and honest about the fact that that's exactly what they do.
I believe from my understanding, when the truck loads to a side over the roundabout curb, it actually puts more PSI pressure on the wheels. And so it puts compromising the wheels of overload, depending on what their load capacity is. So, yeah, they do tend to try to do that if I understand that correctly. I think that this, rather than the way it looks like, is two lane going through with a number of curves, if that's correct. It would be a deterrent.
It should be.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Mr. Councilmember Kessy, although I am not for all of this added growth, I do see the need for this road and the way that it works for the city and the Buckos. So I would be supportive of this.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I concur. I would be supportive of this as well.
Well, if there are. If there is not any more discussion, yes, Councilman DeYoung.
Yeah, I was looking to move the motion.
Well, let me go through the motions here. So after the deliberation, I do need to close the public hearing, and I will do that. It sounds like the council does want to move forward with a motion. So go ahead, Councilman DeYoung.
I don't have it in front of me, so I would depend on your reading of the exact title, please, in support. I move the motion for the Bucko property.
Okay. So we have a motion by Councilman DeYoung. Is there a second?
Councilwoman Owen, second.
Okay. So we have a motion by Councilman DeYoung, and it's seconded by Councilwoman Owen to authorize the mayor to sign the development agreement with the Bucko Survivor Trust. I am going to go through the list. So if you are for the mayor signing this development agreement, the Bucko agreement, please signify by saying yes when I call your name, or no if you are not. So I will begin with.
Quickly, are we able to remove this, this 9A, or is this part of the agreement?
The 9A is part of the agreement, correct? There's a question by Councilwoman Diamond. She is wanting to know if 9A is part of the agreement.
It is a part of the negotiated agreement. However, if council wishes to ask to strike that particular provision, it is within your purview to make a motion to strike that provision.
However, we do have a motion on the table. I already have a motion on the table. So I am going to go through.
Madam Mayor, parliamentary inquiry?
Yes.
Would an amendment be in order?
So you've got a motion and a second. You could ask for a friendly, a motion for a friendly amendment to amend the agreement. However, I think that the preferable procedure would simply be to vote this motion down if that's the intent of council, and then do a motion to amend the agreement by striking paragraph 9 and revote.
And parliamentary inquiry, so since it's been moved in second, the move of the motion, no longer has control of the motion, and its bodies cannot rescind the motion. Is that correct?
You can't rescind the motion, there's been a second.
Thank you very much.
So I'm going to go through the list here. So Councilman DeYoung, again, yes if you're for the motion as it stands, no if you are not.
I'm voting against my motion, thank you. No.
No, okay. Councilwoman Kessy?
Okay, so I will also go with that so that we can revote, so no.
Councilman Diamond?
No, I'd like to see the amendment.
Okay, you want to see it amended?
I would like to see it amended, yes.
All right. Councilman Owen?
Yes.
Okay. Councilman Lavaca?
Yes.
Councilman McGoffin?
Yes.
Councilman Allen?
No.
Okay. At a vote of four to three, the motion as it stands has been declined. So do I understand there is a second motion with an amendment?
Yes, Madam Mayor, I'll make that motion.
So I have a motion by Councilwoman Kessy amending the motion by removing 9A on the agreement.
Councilmember DeYoung, second.
Okay. Motion by Councilwoman Kessy, seconded by Councilman DeYoung, authorizing the mayor to sign the development agreement with the Bucko Survivor Trust with 9A being removed from the agreement. Again, I'm going to go through the list. Councilman DeYoung, if you are for this with the amendment, signify by saying yes. If not, say no.
Aye.
Okay. Councilwoman Kessy?
Yes.
Councilwoman Diamond?
Yes.
Councilman Owen?
Yes.
Councilman Lavaca?
Yes.
Councilman McGoffin?
Yes.
And Councilman Allen?
Yes.
Okay. And we have a unanimous decision. The council authorizes the mayor to sign the development agreement with the Bucko Survivors Trust with the amendment of omitting 9A in the agreement. Okay. And that is it for our public hearings. We will now move on to new business. First item is the 2021 budget amendment, number two. It's ordinance number 2003-21. Ms. Burton?
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, council members. This is a typical action by the council at the end of every year. We go through and we review our budget to assure that we meet our requirements. And so I have included, we've discussed this at our study session, and I have included the details of the items that I'm asking you to amend this evening. And so I'll ask for a motion.
Okay. So Finance Director Debbie Burton is asking for a motion to adopt ordinance 2003-21, amending the 2021-2022 biennial budget. Any, do I have a motion?
I motion to move the budget forward.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, seconded on.
Okay. So I have a motion by Councilwoman Lavaca, seconded by Councilwoman Diamond. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Okay, I counted four there. I'm assuming all those opposed, same sign. All right.
Nay.
Sorry? Is there a nay? One, one nay, okay. Councilman DeYoung in opposition. He's opposing the ordinance. All right, so as it stands, six to one, we have a motion to adopt ordinance 2003-21, amending the 2021-2022 biennial budget. Moving on to item number three, or actually, it's two on the new business. Again, Director Burton, and this is the recommendation from the Lodging Tax Advisory Committee for the 2022 Lodging Tax Grant Program. Ms. Burton?
Thank you again, Mayor and council. This is my pleasure to bring forward to you the work of the committee. We had, as you can see in your agenda, we had six applicants for funding for 2022 to promote the City of Cedar Woolley and to encourage overnight stays and market our community. So I'm pleased to, we were unable to fund 100%, but I believe we did an equitable adjustment to a couple of the applications with just a slight decrease in the amounts that they had asked for. So I ask you to please approve the recommendations of your Lodging Tax Committee.
Okay. Are there any questions or concerns that you'd like to ask of Ms. Burton? If not, I am looking for a motion.
Madam Mayor, I'll make that motion.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Councilman McGoffin, I'll second.
Thank you. So we have a motion by Councilwoman Kessy, seconded by Councilman McGoffin, to approve the recommendations of the Lodging Tax Advisory Committee for the use of the lodging tax revenues to fund the 2022 Lodging Tax Grant Program. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 And opposed, same sign. We have a unanimous agreement there, so motion passes. Thank you. Next item, the supplemental agreement, three to agreement 2019 PS-11 with Transportation Solutions, Inc. for additional design and right-of-way services. Mr. Freiberger?
Thank you, Mayor. Council, this motion and the following supplemental agreement, four, affect the same projects, so I'll kind of mix the two in the interest of time as I speak about them. Supplemental Agreement Three amends the design phase agreement that we have with TSI to do the design for the SR20-SR9 intersection project, which we just awarded and contracted with Colacuccio Brothers. During the course of the design work, there were a number of changes that took place, and I outlined them in the report, just really briefly. The main change was that we had to add a right-of-way phase to this project that we didn't originally intend to or anticipate doing, and that was because of limitations for the right-of-way on the southeast corner and also on the northwest side. We found that we had to shift the center line to the west slightly to make the lane configuration work. When we did that, it created a grade problem over on the Arco side to where without doing some revisions to their entrance off of Highway 9, we couldn't build the work properly. In other words, the grades forced us to go back into their property about 15 feet to make the approach usable. It was already fairly steep. So we had to hire through TSI, a land appraisal firm and negotiator, to work with the Arco people to revise their approach. At the same time, we elected to negotiate with them to close the existing right-in-only approach on Highway 20, which I'm sure many of you who have used that know, that's kind of a dive-bomb approach. So that was the goal of the project that we were able to do at the same time. So that was about $25,000 of this revision by itself. The other things that were involved, the project limits themselves shifted north about 200 feet up near the entrance into the small mini shopping center there as well. That was to accommodate a negotiated right-of-way donation with Janicki Logging at the southeast corner to allow us to put the radii in that we needed to make the road function properly. That was a no-cost acquisition in terms of the right-of-way purchase, but we did build a new approach up at the north end, which also allowed us to convert, will allow us to convert the existing Janicki Logging approach to a right-in, right-out turn. Again, as you all know, anybody who's used that intersection, it's really congested in peak hours, and folks trying to make turns in and out of Janicki Logging have a great deal of difficulty doing that without blocking traffic, especially the large trucks that go in and out of that approach. There's a couple of other smaller things, but those are the main things that happened there. There was a few other design surprises that we found. So at the end of the day, when we added all these up, they're about $40,000 in changes. It's a fairly significant addition to the design phase, but I've looked at it closely, and these are all completely justified. TSI has completed the work diligently and got the project out the bid, and then when they asked for the additional funds, I have no basis to deny that. That's what we're proposing tonight. I've done an analysis on the third page of the agenda item that shows you the status of the project funding. This is a repetition of what you saw when we requested award of the contract to Colacuccio. At that time, I was carrying some contingency for the work itself. This supplement and the other one that I'll talk about in just a moment do cut into that significantly, but we. significantly, but we do have additional funds available through our combination of the various funds we use for funding arterial projects that will more than allow us to keep sufficient funds available for any construction contingency that comes up on the project. So, that's supplemental agreement number three. And what we're asking is council, council's authorization for the mayor to sign supplemental agreement three for the Public Works Agreement 2019 PS11 with Transportation Solutions for these additional design and right-of-way services in the amount of $40,000. And we would request a motion on that.
All right. Thank you, Mark. Are there any questions or comments for Mr. Freiberger? Okay, hearing none. Do we have a motion?
Madam Mayor, Councilman Owen, I'll make that motion.
All right. Thank you. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. So, we have a motion by Councilman Owen, seconded by Councilwoman Kestie, to approve and authorize the mayor to sign the supplemental agreement three to agreement 2019 PS11 with Transportation Solutions, Inc. for additional design and right-of-way services in the amount of $40,310.84 and extending the completion date to December 31, 2023. Any questions or concerns? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed, same sign.
Madam, Madam Mayor, I'd like to abstain from voting on this one.
I'm sorry, Councilman McGoffin, say again.
I'd like to abstain from voting on this issue.
Okay. All right. So, we have Councilman McGoffin abstaining from the vote. So, once again, I will call for the vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Thank you. All those opposed, same sign. All right. Motion carries. Thank you. And thank you, Ms. Councilman McGoffin. All right. Moving on to supplemental agreement number four, Mr. Freiberger?
Yes. And so, this is an additional supplemental agreement with Transportation Solutions, Inc. to provide the construction management and inspection services for the construction phase of the project. The request is for $132,662.16. Basically, what this will do, TSI will act as the prime consultant to do this, and Reichardt and EB Construction of Linden will provide the construction management services for this. This is a federal aid project, and there are very specific requirements under federal aid for how we manage the projects. It takes a qualified firm to do that, and it also requires a selection process to use such a firm for this. In the case of a design consultant that has the capability to do this, if you reserve that right within your original contract, you can simply supplement the agreement after negotiating the price for the work and move forward with the design, the construction phase. And that's what we've done. As I mentioned in the agreement, we were still in the negotiations when I wrote this memorandum. I completed those negotiations this afternoon, and the price has reduced by approximately $12,200. I haven't gotten their actual written thing, but what we will request tonight is, is your approval to award this agreement not to exceed $132,662. The actual final agreement the mayor signs will be $12,200, roughly less than this. There'll be some mathematical things to work out. As I mentioned before, the budget is presented on page three. It's basically a repetition of the one that you saw in supplemental number three. We do, we have identified sufficient funding to provide for contingencies in the project, and it's staff recommendation that we do move forward. I forgot to mention in the presentation on supplemental agreement three, but you did move to extend the end date for the agreement from December 31 of 2021 to 2023. And the reason for the two-year extension is that the construction phase will take about a year, which we hope will complete in 2022. However, as I've mentioned several times, the signal equipment, which we're just beginning the submittal work on right now, has a six-to-10-month lead time right now due to COVID. And if it comes in at six, we'll build the, the project successfully in 2022. But if it is 10 months, it's going to push this project pretty close to 2023, and I wanted to allow that time in the agreement as a result. So, with that being said, I'll entertain any questions that you might have on this agreement.
So, regarding supplemental agreement four, the agreement for the 2019 PSE11 Transportation Solutions, are there any questions or comments for Mr. Freiberger at this time from the council? Hearing none and seeing no one with their hands up online, I will ask for a motion.
Madam Mayor, I will make a motion for supplemental number four.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, I'll second that.
Thank you. So, we have a motion by Councilman Diamonds, or Allen, seconded by Councilwoman Diamond to approve and authorize Mayor Johnson to sign the supplemental agreement four to agreement 2019 PS11 with Transportation Solutions, Inc. for construction face services in the amount not to exceed $132,662.16, with the possibility of it being around $12,200 less in actuality. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Thank you. Opposed, same sign? Okay. Motion carries. Thank you, council. Thank you, Mr. Freiberger. Moving on to our 2022 salary ordinance, ordinance number 2002-21. Ms. Burton?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. And my last item for this evening is ordinance 2022-21. It is the practice of the city to bring forward a salary ordinance each year, setting the pay scales and amounts for certain non-represented employee city staff. The ordinance effectively sets the salaries and wages to be paid for the 2022 year. Incorporated into these amounts is a 3.75% salary and wage increase, which was what was awarded just recently under the new contract that we did with our AFSMI collective bargaining agreement. It is important to note that 2% of this was already included in our 2022 budget, and so we will be looking for additional funding for 2022. City staff is currently working on the 2022 budget to review what, you know, what has already been approved, and then we'll be bringing to you early first quarter of 2022 an amendment that incorporates the known factors that we have in, in front of us and have been approved by council already. And there's one item that I do want to point out, that's the part-time firefighters in, in deep conversation with Chief Wagner. We have decided to increase that hourly rate. It previously was $16 per hour, but we have increased that to $18 per hour. As you know, we are in a little bit of a crisis with finding, you know, finding folks to assist us in our fire activity staffing. So, we're hoping that this too will encourage and incentivize folks to come join the City of Cedar Woolley. Part-time firefighter, and I don't, Chief Wagner can pipe in if he needs to, but they're very important right now to us in enabling us to continue our expert, our wonderful service that we do provide. So, I don't have anything else. If you have any questions, let me know.
All right. Are there any questions for Director Burton?
I have one question, Mayor?
Yes.
For Debbie?
Yes.
So, is there anything in, I, it just, some people have been here less than a month, and the next month, they're going to be getting a raise, but they just signed on saying that, yes, I'm, I'm good with what I'm getting paid right now. Is there anything that says a period of time? Or do we just go with it, and they're just, hey, they're lucky they got it?
It is the council's authority to set the salaries for, for the non-represented staff. So, that is, this is just a practice that the council has always had. So, of course, if you want to make change to this ordinance, it's your right to do that.
I mean, I'm, I'm up for discussion on this from my other council members. To me, if someone just signed on without, I mean, can we make it like a limit or something? You just got here, and now you're getting a, a raise with it? I don't know. It's just my thought. If nothing else, that's all.
Would that be a contractual issue for each individual? Is there something written in, in individual contracts? I know, at least in the private sector, there's generally a 30, 60, 90, you know, those sorts of things in place and, and written in certain contracts? I'm not sure if that's stuff that's, that's currently done with any of the staff listed.
Most of, go ahead. Do you want Charlie?
I, I have not had a chance to review all the contracts in the city, but certainly I know with my own contract, that is something that's written in there, that as we have these annual increases, that they'll be reflected. There'll be an increase reflected, you know, via my contract. So, I suspect most of them are written that way, but I don't know the answer. I don't know if you do, Debbie?
That is exactly what I was going to respond, that it, the contracts state that the salary ordinance will be the driver for the compensation.
Okay.
Council Lady Joellen, this is Councilman Glenn. Okay. Council Lady, because sometimes it's better to be lucky than good when you're hired, you know? So...
I, I hear.
You know, I mean, it, it's almost like they came in at an opportune time, and I don't think we can punish people. I'd sure be glad if I got a raise my first month, but it doesn't always happen. So, I, I don't know. That's my spin on it, and I understand your concern, Joellen.
Are there any other questions or comments for Director Burton? Okay. Hearing none. I am looking for a motion. The motion would be to recommend that we adopt the 2022 Salary Ordinance 2002-21.
Madam Mayor, I'd like to make that motion.
Okay. Thank you.
Madam Mayor, I'll second it.
All right. Thank you. So, we have a motion by Councilwoman Diamond, seconded by Councilman Allen, to adopt the 2022 Salary Ordinance 2002-21. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, same sign.
No.
Okay. So, six to one. Motion carries with Councilman Owen opposing the vote. All right. Thank you. We will move on now to an updated retainer agreement for legal and support services. City Administrator Charlie Bush?
Thank you, Mayor Johnson. And this item could easily be entitled prosecution, city prosecution. That's the real reason why we're bringing this updated retainer agreement for legal and support services. Had we been looking to contract or recommending to contract with another firm, it would have been just under the guise of prosecution. So, the primary update, this is an updated contract with our city attorney's firm, which is Weed, Grafstra and Associates. The bulk of that contract remains the same. The difference being that we've added prosecution to that. We're recommending that our current city attorney's firm provide prosecution services. The main reason for that is on the consent agenda tonight, we had a change in code that put the prosecutor under the city attorney. This was done to have an attorney essentially overseeing another attorney, which is a best practice, an important practice. And so, it makes a lot of sense for us then to potentially consolidate our prosecution services with our city attorney's firm, because it'll make it a lot more efficient in terms of that relationship and how that works between the two. They've, they've got to stay in lockstep and informing each other. So, with that said, that's why the recommendation. In terms of the budget impact, we have $50,000 in the 2022 budget for prosecution. We were able to work out a total fee for this service of $49,200. So, we're about $800 under budget. The one addition that is in here to the contract for overall services that I wanted to point out as well, this was something the city attorney brought up in conversation, is a 3% cost inflator on all of the rates for legal services on the contract as a whole. That would start in 2023. There's an opener in place to talk about that, because we all know inflation's high right now, but it could easily go back down at some point, and we hope it does. So, we have the ability to, to talk about that, adjust that if needed, but I wanted to point that out to you as well. So, the two main adjustments, we've added prosecution, and there's a cost inflator that we added to the overall contract. Currently, there is no cost inflator, so this is meant to be, typically, these are longer-term contracts. This contract doesn't have an expiration date. We would simply terminate it if we, we wanted to change services. But with that in mind, if we want to keep it a sustainable relationship, it's not a bad idea to have some kind of cost inflator on there on an annual basis. So...
All right. Thank you. Are there any questions for Mr. Bush? Okay. Hearing and seeing none. Do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion, Madam Mayor.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Okay. Is that Councilman McGoffin?
Yes.
All right. Thank you. So, I had a motion by Councilman Owen, seconded by Councilman McGoffin, to recommend approval of the updated retainer agreement for the legal and support services. This would move, authorize the mayor to sign an updated retainer agreement for legal and support services with Weed, Grafstra and Associates, Inc. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Okay. Motion carries. Unanimous vote. Last item on our agenda tonight is the contract with Mountain Law for Public Defense Services. And Mr. Bush, we're back with you.
Thank you, Mayor Johnson. Yeah. Continuing the restructuring of the city's municipal court, one piece of that was looking at our public defense services. And so, we did a request for proposals in the last few months to solicit firms that could provide the service while meeting the standards, the new standards that we adopted just a few meetings back for indigent defense services. Those standards were required by, by the state, but initially by a court case that happened about 10 years ago. And they essentially raised the bar for public defense services. So, we went out and asked for firms that could provide that higher level of public defense services, and we had one respondent, and that was Mountain Law. They're a local firm. They provide services with both Mount Vernon and Burlington. And we were quite, they had a responsive request, or they were responsive to the RFP, and we were quite impressed with their level of service. And, and there's a lot of detail that I've included in the agenda materials. So, we're quite confident they'll meet the standards. We knew that the cost would be higher. That's, this increasing cost for public defense services is something that every city that's made this adjustment has gone through. And so, so our expenses are higher. Our budget for 2022 is $52,000 for these services, and the response came in at $95,000. So, that's a $43,000 difference. It's a general fund expense. And as we adjust the 2022 budget, look to bring that amendment back, we'll absorb that expense. That said, we need to have an indigent defense services firm provide services to the city. We are here at the last meeting of the year, and, and we're asking for your action on this this evening, and we'll work out the budget on the back end. We are confident they'll meet the, the standards and, and manage our liability well in that area and represent folks who receive a public defender well.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Bush. Are there any questions for Mr. Bush?
May I ask a question, Madam Mayor?
Yes. Councilman Lavaca?
So, do they have the capacity to, to accommodate us, Mount Vernon and Burlington, and, and not pencil-whip through cases? Not that they would, but do they have, do they have time to adequately represent the person they're defending? Do you think? Or is there a caseload limitation to how many the cases they'll have on file before we're looking for something else, or?
Yeah. The answer is yes. We're, we're confident they have the ability to handle our cases and handle them well. And there is a caseload limitation. That was a part of the statewide standard that went in place. I defer to the city attorney a little bit on, on the details of that, but we, we don't anticipate being anywhere near that caseload ourselves. And, and so, they've got the staffing to handle it. We're confident they'll do a good job. And that's something we'll be tracking. We'll be watching the, the statistics that they provide to us to make sure that they adhere to the standards that we've adopted.
If you'd like me to follow up everything that Mr. Bush said is accurate, and I would not anticipate that they're even going to hit the caseload limit, I would anticipate that they'll probably be at least 100 under it. They are required to ensure that all of their attorneys are handling a caseload that's less than those limits and is required, they're required to certify to the court that they are under the caseload limits and also provide reports to the city.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Is there any other discussions or questions?
Charlie, just a quick question. This is all state mandated, what the services have to be provided for the?
Yes. That's, that's, that's correct. There was a, a famous case, I think I quoted in there. It was Wilbur versus Mount Vernon, and set a lot of this in motion, and then there was, there were new state standards that came out, and yet we are required to comply with those.
All right. Thank you. Any comments or questions? If not, I will entertain a motion.
Madam Mayor?
I'll motion. Thanks, Chuck. No, Councilman Owen.
I heard from Councilman Owen. Who else? I'm sorry.
Oh, Councilman Lavaca. I'll second that motion.
All right. Thank you. So we have a motion by Councilman Owen and a second by Councilman Lavaca. Any questions? Discussion? Then all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. All right. Motion carries. And with that, we have come to the end of our agenda. I want to wish everybody again a wonderful holiday season, and also want to remind all who may be listening that we are, this is our last meeting for the year, but we will come back January 5th at 6:00 PM and begin our 2022 session. So with that, we are adjourned. Thank you, everyone. Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas.